Okay, so I will call this meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept as presented. Thank you, Councilor Brandl. Any discussion? Call the question those in favor. That is carried. CEO update, Mr. Kim.
And your worship and the members of council. My CA update as of June 8th starts with the health and safety. So all town employees are reporting healthy as of June 3rd. The town hall front desk is now open to the public five days a week from 8:15 a.m. to 4:15 p.m. The tax deadline is Wednesday, June 30th, and there will be 2% late penalty after that. Our planning and development issued three development permits and received a special event application for our graduation parade. Our capital infrastructure projects are going well according to the original schedules. For example, the fire hall water line upgrade is now completed, and it allows to fill a fire truck in seven minutes as compared to previous 45 minutes. So it significantly improved the capacity. Fire department responded to a total of 15 calls last week, which shows the increased level of responses as the weather is changing. The peace officers have been dealing with unsightly premises, including the empty lots for the old highway motor in and DC auto. The swimming pool relaunch date is June 14th. Now, after the first week from the launch, we will be open with a Tuesday to a Saturday schedule. The schedule and program offerings will be increased as we go. The parks crew installed the flower hanging baskets and completed the majority of the repairs on our parks. Relaunch of the MRC facility is scheduled for June 10th on our regular summer hours. We are engaged with a major consultant about geothermal in the region and working on findings from the tri-council tourism engagement. And that concludes my presentation worship.
Okay, questions from council? Council King.
I was just wondering if there were plans to take down the Christmas tree downtown yet?
It's because you repeated that again, so I couldn't hear.
I was just wondering if there was plans to take down the Christmas tree that's still downtown yet?
So your worship, yes.
Other questions, comments from council? Council Grandlock, sorry.
No problem. You mentioned the MRC's opening. Have we filled those vacant positions? And if not, is there a recruitment plan to try to fill them?
Actually, for the details, I'll refer to Gary, our director of community services.
Your worship, so essentially, no, we have not filled all our vacancies. We have, do have enough casuals that we believe that we can provide basic coverage with using our full-time staff that we have as well as casuals, and we're still trying to recruit.
Mr. Kim, is there like, is there a recruitment plan for HR or something we could do to to help them out if we're not getting anyone locally or any interest locally?
To your worship to the counselor, yes, currently I'm talking to the HR manager with regard to finding some innovative ways to posting. Yeah.
Thank you. I think we're gonna have challenges with that as it goes along, because I can tell you in the business community out there right now, it is a theme across the board there that recruitment right now is a huge issue. So it's great that economy is busy and things are happening, but the theme out there is nobody can find people. So it's gonna be interesting. Counsel Ferguson.
Do you know what our status is with our meeting request with Minister Nixon regarding Devonshire Beach?
So your worship to the council, the request letter has been sent.
Okay. And then just to follow up to that, do, has Parks reached out to us about their maintenance plan or their cleanup plan this year? I was down at Devonshire Beach today, and it looks like there hasn't been a lot of maintenance out there. So beach season's fast upon us, so I just want to make sure that that's gonna be at the forefront there.
Through your worship to the counselor, administration has been discussing about that matter and will report back to the council in a right time.
Okay. Other questions? Council McGregor.
So on that note, Tyler, when you were saying that we're gonna have a tough time filling all these vacant positions in the community in different places, what would, what are some of the reasons? Like, are people nervous that they're gonna get shut down again? So they're, they don't want to like get a job? Or are they, is it like the job security? Or is it the not feeling appreciated by like higher up government? Or like, how come we're, because we could see ourselves being in trouble?
Well, and so fairness, like, this is not a Slave Lake issue. This is, this is issue across Alberta. So to give you an idea, you know, because I do follow some of this closely. So approximately 45 days, you know, you look south across the border to the States, they're experiencing the same thing. And so they're kind of ahead of us, so you can kind of see the things building on there. So what's happened is they're opened up, and all of a sudden, the economy's going again. Businesses are open, need to hire people back. And of course, with things being closed, people adapt, change their lifestyle. Some now all of a sudden, we don't need both parents to work. You know, that's an option that that changes. Two is that, you know, if you're trying to buy a vehicle, you're trying to buy a quad, a scooter, a bicycle, a kayak, or anything out there, you can see that people are spending money. So consumer demand is up. So you know, you have more traffic and more consumer spending. So you have some of these businesses too that are in a situation where we actually need more people. There's also too that lots of businesses have had to adapt different things. Like COVID hasn't gone away. Like, you know, the world is opening up and things are going on. But you know, there's still, COVID still exists, and there's still these health restrictions, like as at a restaurant as an example, that I still have to maintain, and it takes extra people to be able to do that. And another is government assistance. The problem that they had in the States was that the average median income for, I can't remember what state it was I was looking at. There's about five states. So the funding for the States works different for EI, basically. They, here in Canada, it's basically a federal government to the individual type program. There, it's a federal government to the state program, and then the state administers it. And basically, they had four or five states that got together and said like, listen, we're not taking any more government assistance. We're not giving any out. So we're giving our people 30 days' notice. And the issue came down to the fact that the average household wage before COVID was $65,000, and the government support was average household wage was $85,000. So it's not the people thing. It's just a practical thing that numbers made more sense to why would I go back to work? You know, I think another thing that hurts us too is that there's a lot of support for daycare before as well, right? So you're getting this $25 daycare, which made it more practical for parents to go out and work. And now without that support, it makes more sense for that parent to stay home as well. So I think it's just a combination of a bunch of factors. And I will say that I think uncertainty in the marketplace doesn't help either. So you know, I will go back, like, the most important thing is that our economy around here isn't doing poorly. And so forestry still continues to do well. They've hired a lot of people, and they hired up a lot of the oil field. And now oil field seeing those, that uptake and things are happening. They're hiring up these other pieces. And so, yeah, and you know, it's, how many businesses have we seen start up in Slave Lake over COVID too, right? So you have these businesses that are adding, and they've sucked up some people as well. And so now, you know, it's a, it's a struggle for everyone. And people, I think as a consumer, you're gonna have to be patient, because businesses are gonna have to adapt. You know, rec facilities, you're gonna have to adapt. Municipals, you're gonna have to adapt. But I will say it's a better problem to have than, than the other alternative of, you know, no one has anywhere to go, and no one's spending, and the economy sucks, and all those good things. So you know, there was a time where we used to complain as business people about how tough it was with labor. I can tell you for a lot of the last number of years, it was a complaint we all looked forward to again. So I think it's just, it's gonna be a learning curve for everybody. That was a big, long answer. So jumping into some other stuff, I got a few here. So first off, you know, summer is always kind of a time that you get out and you start to see stuff, and the snow's kind of melted, we're seeing what's going on out there. And you kind of start to see these things that you just kind of left and didn't really deal with. And so the one I know that council really hasn't dealt with, and we don't really want to, but is the property at 714th Ave in Southwest. And so basically, it's the old auto mechanic building beside the hotel. So we demolished these two hotels. And we've got this derelict building that's basically broken windows and broken whatever, and people coming and going, and people starting fires there in the winter. And you know, there's a big safety concern there. So you know, it is owned by the same owner as the hotel beside, who's basically said like, I'm not even gonna give you guys money to cut grass. I'm not gonna do anything there. So realistically, it's just gonna sit there for years on end as a safety concern. And I would really like to encourage administration to say, rather than let's just look at this and turn a blind eye for five years, or really pro on economic development and growing things, whatever else, we need to deal with this problem. And so I would like to make a motion that administration look into dealing with the issues that currently exist to the property of 714th Ave, Southwest. Any comments, discussion on that? Call the question those in favor. Let's carry, perfect. Let's do that one. I got another one. Oh, so, and in regards to that property too, people are literally driving across it and hitting the, so where 12th and 8th come on the opposite side in the Southwest, people are just driving across that parking lot and then cutting into there. So that intersection isn't really made for people to drive across the grass and do whatever. And I think on that side, some of that is town boulevard that would be there. So it's not the private property owner. That maybe some concrete barriers to limit traffic just jumping onto the street at different spots might be a worthwhile exercise. So I'll throw that one out as something that could be done immediate. Baseball diamonds. So got contacted by a member of the baseball. We looked at some fields there. You know, baseball diamond seems to be one that continues to plague me all the time that I've been on council is that there's always this frustration about what we do and what we don't do, and minor baseball's expectations and our own expectations. You know, even in some quick discussions before council started here, there was misinformation about who looks after what diamond. And so I would really like to, at one of our future meetings, potentially the committee of the whole in July, that the service standards for baseball diamonds are brought to council. Let's have a good discussion about what we're doing there and what we're not doing, and kind of dig into that one.
To your worship, yes, we have started that discussion. And then at some point, when it's convenient, we'll report back to the council.
Okay. So that one's on the radar, and you're bringing that in anyway. Okay. Last one. I'm really excited for economic development. As our council has been, it's been one of our top priorities. Some of the action pieces that we've been waiting for is around that we need to data collection and transportation survey. And so that kind of got parked because of COVID and those things going on with the world opening up. Do we see that happening in the next little while? We're already on that, stuff's going, we're nodding, so I feel like there's a possibility.
Right on. On through your worship, yes. So we, again, we, we started that discussion again to do the transportation survey. We already talked to the provincial official and got some sort of a permission to resume. So it is likely that we'll do that over the summer. And we'll do it a little more compressively now that the COVID is a little more relaxed.
Okay. So it's happening. Perfect. Love it. Council Bus.
So a couple of things here. You talked about the new water line going into the fire hall there to help fill the trucks quicker and stuff like this. Also, I believe this year in the budget, there was a new high-speed internet line going in so that our communications with the Grand Prairie and all those places would be met and stuff like this. Can you tell me when the process is that we're gonna get that line put in?
So actually, we are, so your worship to the counselor, we have been looking at all different options, because now that the emerging technology, which is the 5G, is coming. So we are looking at what is the best options to, you know, to leverage those new technologies instead of using the old technology. And then we have to redo it again in like a few years' time. So we are looking at a variety of different options to upgrade that. The goal is to do it as quickly as possible. Yeah.
Okay. And then the other one, I believe, is for the mayor, because he was talking with the gentleman from Highways last week. Do we have any update on any of the projects when they're kicking off around here or anything like that?
No. My understanding is that they're still, they're still committing that paving on Highway 2 will be done by the end of 2021. It's bid at Alton, but the contractor, I think, has till the end of October or something to actually have it finished. So they're talking about late summer or something startup. How 88 still, no investment being made in it. My understanding is that there's been significant amounts of money put into pothole repair this year, way more than was currently budgeted for it. And yet, there's still so much more to do. And just even availability to get more done is a huge issue. And then the message we get from the minister is nothing's changing. So it'll be interesting to see what happens. Council King.
I was approached last week by the Sega Group at Roland Mischner, and they've asked me to bring forward that the pride flag be raised for the remainder of the month as of when the flags go back to full mass. So I'd just like to make a motion that the town of Slave Lake raise the pride flag downtown on June 10th for the remainder of the month in celebration of Pride Month.
In downtown, so in front of.
In service grade, yeah.
Any discussion on that? Call the question those in favor. Those opposed? That is carried. Okay, anything else out there? Okay. With that, I will say that let's jump into reports on new business. So we'll start with the water transmission break.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So this, the purpose of this report is to update council on the recent 250 millimeter, which is equivalent to 10-inch water transmission break that affected the operation of Splash Park and our proposed work plan to bring the Splash Park back in operations. So if you could refer Attachment 1, that shows the location of the break. The break location is between Hospital and Springwood Northeast Drive. So basically, our operations crew noticed a pressure drop at Hilltop Reservoir, and then they figured out that there is a transmission break there. So they, to remedy, to stop the break, what they did is, as per Attachment 2, they installed a valve at Point B, so that allowed them to isolate the line between Point A and Point B. So basically, isolate the line that's been broken. However, doing that, the water feeding, water line feeding the Splash Park was also isolated, as well as a portion of Hospital. The southeast portion of the hospital is fed by the same line. That was also been isolated. So, but Hospital is also fed from the northeast portion, so they have a secondary line running. So basically, it didn't affect their operations overall. However, Splash Park is still inactive. So with this COVID restriction that are trying to ease up in the coming weeks, Community Services is planning to bring Splash Park back in operations. So our plan to, in order to do that, we would have to install a plug at Point C. So what we will do, we will excavate behind the hospital where the T is. And basically, we will, we will cut the line, install the plug, and that will allow the operation of Splash Park, as well as that will feed, restart the water behind the hospital. Only thing is, before we start any, any water circulation or usage, we would have to disinfect the line, take some water samples, send it to provincial lab. Once the test comes back negative, and then we can start, start feeding. The whole process, I would say, with the testing takes between five and seven days. So as soon as we install the plug, we will take the samples right away. And then between seven days, the line should be back in service.
Okay.
And basically, other than that, we will also be providing, we will bringing forward a report next week to discuss some options to repair or replace the broken line to the council. The anticipated cost to put a plug, to cut the line and put a plug is between the range of $5,000 and $10,000, so it's not that substantial, which possibly could be covered through operational budget. So again, from the communication side, we will be putting out communications to Hospital, just letting them know their back access would be affected, because we will use up most of the space there. And also, if a portion of trail usage is affected, then we will put something out on our website. So yeah, our recommendation to council is to accept this report as an information.
Okay. Council King.
Thanks for looking into this. I really want this done sooner than later, so I'm all for it.
So when, when would you guys actually start it?
I think, if I'm not wrong, Corey already put in the locate request. So as soon as that's all cleared up, they can start it right away.
Okay. And so then realistically, a week after that, once we're testing and stuff is done?
Yeah, we can start the operations of Splash Park.
Okay. So where, so my understanding goes that this is broke under the creeks. There's no environment stuff that we're, like, are we plugging a broken pipe that's in the creek bed? Or it's back further?
No, back further.
So we don't have to deal with environment?
No.
That's my poor sense why it's five to seven days. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, like Council King there, it's Splash Park is something, obviously, that's used by our community, and people are excited to see it. So some good communication as to why the delay. But I appreciate administration making an effort to get it done sooner rather than later. Motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Call the question those in favor. That is carried. Okay. Operating agreement. Northern Lakes.
So good evening, your worship and council. Tonight, I want to present to you a operating agreement with the Northern Lakes College for the operations of the Aquatic Center. As you know, the town and the college have been in various operating agreements for many years. The latest agreement expired on December 31st, 2020. With some changes in occupational health and safety legislation, we carried a review, and essentially, only changes reflect the new legislation, where the town and the college will have a slightly different relationship. And in fact, it actually clarifies better who's responsible for OHNS within the pool. Previously, we had a prime contractor relationship. And now going forward, it'll be an independent contract relationship. Really means the town is responsible for the operational side of the pool, or we're responsible for our staff, and solely responsible for their occupational health and safety versus before. It was, we were responsible, but the college was also responsible. So it wasn't clear, as clear-cut when, as it relates to the health and safety component. That is the only change to the agreement. The rest of the agreement stays as essentially the same as it was in the past. And so this is a five-year agreement. In the past, we've always had shorter-term agreements. The colleges certainly feels comfortable in continuing on the working, the ongoing relationship. And the agreement basically spells out the responsibilities as to to the college and the town as who is responsible for which operational expenses. And all of that is stayed the same from previous agreements. So with that, the only other comment I do want to make is that the college does feel comfortable if this agreement were to be approved before we open. They do feel more comfortable operating that way. If it, if for some reason council needs additional information and doesn't feel willing to approve it, there are other steps that we can take to make that happen for Monday.
Okay. Questions, comments from council? Council King, sorry.
Like you said, Gary, I took a look at the other one, took a look at this one, not many changes. So unless anybody else has questions, I'll make a motion.
Feel free, and then people can still ask questions.
My council approved town entering into an agreement with Northern Lakes College for the operations of the Aquatic Center located on the Northern Lakes College Slave Lake campus.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Council McGregor.
So Gary, thanks for this. I like to see that this is a five-year agreement. That's a nice thing. And it's good to see that the town and the college, through all of this, still have a really good working relationship through all the changes and the shutdown with COVID and that. So I like to see that. So thanks for that work behind the scenes.
Okay. I also agree that I think we have a good agreement with them. And we're actually quite fortunate, I think, as a municipality, you had the agreement that we have with the Northern Lakes College for that recreational facility. And so the fact that they want to do five years, I think, that's a, that's a good thing for the town of Slave Lake. Motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Call the question those in favor. That is carried. Easy, easy. Actually, so Gary, the intention is next week, the pool would open, potentially?
That's correct.
With modified hours, we're trying to.
Modified hours will be raised around our staffing. We will be open from Monday to Saturday next week. And then following weeks will be Tuesday to Saturday.
Okay. And Ken, is there, like, because I don't even know what the recreational facility regulations are and what we can do in phase two or whatever else. So can, like, do we have public swim and people can do it? Or it's just like a family can rent the pool for an hour? Or how's this look?
Potentially, there could be public swims with up to 30% occupancy with encouraged distancing in the pool. We haven't seen the fine detail yet from the province, so we're just going by the information that we have at this point in time.
Okay. So then we would see things in our field house as well?
That is correct. Yeah, so on the field house side of things, or on the MRC side of things, it's a little bit more straightforward that we would still be allowed 30% occupancy. We are both, I should also add to, just so that we can help control numbers and also help guarantee people a spot, we encourage people to book ahead of time. We're still gonna take bookings. We're still gonna leave our booking system in place. But yeah, we'll be at 30% occupancy for the field house and for the track and so on. We still have to encourage social distancing, so two meters apart. However, there's also, or also comment made in the government documentation that says, well, while you're playing sport, you don't have to be two meters apart. So we need the fine details to know when, what applies to what. If you're playing pickleball, do you need to be two meters apart? And then, or not? And then when you leave the facility, maybe you need to be, you know, need to be spaced out. We still don't have, have not received that fine detail.
Okay. So when you do, and when it's clear what we're doing and that sort of stuff, what's the communication plan that goes out to the community? Like, how do we know about this?
So we've, we've worked on, we have several messages ready to go. We are planning to do a video. The challenge is, is that the content might change over the next couple of days.
Okay.
So we're hopeful that the government will give this information as they launch or announce stage two reopening.
I'm encouraged by the fact that you guys have a plan to communicate it, and videos, I think, are great, and make it clear to understand what, what we, what we can and can't do as users at those facilities. Perfect. That's all I wanted. Okay. Thanks, Gary. Okay. Acknowledging our local healthcare professionals. So Council Bus, you brought this up last week. And so we have it on the table for a verbal discussion today about ideas about how that would work. It was a feeling from last week was, I think, that council supported that idea. We're just logistically, what does that actually look like? Maybe you want to get started?
Like I said last week, it was just, it was more along the lines of, I know for the entire community, it's been a, how to put it bluntly, a process putting up the pandemic over the last year and a half. Frontline healthcare workers have been put to the test, stressed to the max. I think it's just a, it would be a nice idea to, to put something forward, to thank them. All the support staff, nurses, doctors, everybody that, that has faced the brunt of this. I know the rest of the community has too, but these, the, these, this profession has really stepped forward. And I think it would be something to, to put out there. I think.
Okay. Council McGregor.
So Darren, when you, oh, sorry, Councilor Boss, what your name is, Darren. When you sent the email out, what really attracted me to your email was community needs a hug. And so I've been thinking about this since you've sent it, and with your comments from last week and that. So I would like to maybe see a discussion as a community as a whole, feeling the pressures of COVID. There's been all different kinds. Healthcare professionals sign up for a job that others don't for the reason that that's their, their passion and their background. And I was wondering if it would be something maybe council would be interested in working at the same time uh, working at the same time when the Chamber of Commerce is looking to hold, um, sort of a community, like the block party again, just not as extensive with some down. If that would be something council would be interested in taking on and partnering with them, um, doing a community barbecue, um, that day so that we could encompass all of community and, um, exactly what your email said, that community, um, needs a hug. That way we could actually maybe even physically hug some people by that time in August. And it would also really give us a chance to, um, you know, say thank you to our community for, since last March, for all the trials, the tribulations, the closing, the non-closing, the becoming a teacher at a home for moms and dads, the teachers adapting, um, the healthcare staff adapting to a pandemic that they never signed up for, uh, the people working on the front lines at the grocery stores, um, and just the whole community as a whole. Because I really liked that part of your email that said that community needs a hug. Um, and I would like to focus on that because I know truly behind that, you know exactly what that means. So, um, I just thought that that might be something as council, we could give up, uh, a few hours that day or that afternoon, um, and flip some burgers, do it COVID friendly, but be able to actually talk and thank people. Um, like I said, maybe give some actual physical hugs, which I think that some people, um, could use and need. So that would be my way in on that one.
Okay, other comments, questions? I will say, go ahead, Counsel King.
I really like that idea, Joy. Um, kind of gets the whole community involved. And it's kind of from us personally giving back to them, especially if we're the ones flipping burgers and handing it out. And I think a lot of people need that reconnection with us.
Yeah, I'll throw in there that, uh, we actually did something like that, um, after the fire. Uh, council did, um, um, community thing one day and we were all flipping burgers. And, uh, uh, it was good. It was, you know, people came out, I think during the block party or whatever that looks like for what the Chamber of Commerce is doing. I think it's a great opportunity to do it. It's good exposure. It hits a lot of people. I think using part of that, that event or that thing that we're doing to maybe recognize certain groups while we're doing it. Um, as an example, healthcare workers is, is, is a good thing to do. I think that we can do some little things too with social media here as we move forward and, and what we're communicating, the message that we're sending out. Um, uh, through some of our town communication, I think that goes a long way. I think it also looked to leadership from, uh, Joy as Chair of the Health Committee there. Is there any little things that we could be doing in regards to their daily operation over there, um, dropping something off or, or, I, I like, I have no idea, maybe a piece of equipment or something like that would go a long way. Um, to see what we could do to help out over there because it doesn't always have to be a big grand gesture. It just has to show appreciation. And so I think we can do a couple little things and maybe a big thing that incorporates, uh, the entire community.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, um, I, I always run the risk of, um, that's why I like that community needs a hug. I always run the risk of the fear of forgetting those people, um, that have also adapted to all of this. Like I said, I mean, healthcare providers, that's their, you know, that's their passion, that's their job. That's why I'm not a doctor, an EMS person, because I can't even handle a scraped knee. Um, and our fire department, those kind of people, but they sign up for, for that job. They're in a total different caliber. So, you know, um, I, I, I will work and, and ask if there's something, um, at the tri council that we could do, um, in the meantime. Um, but yeah, I'd really like to see us work, um, for the whole community, um, to feel that appreciation and, uh, and support.
Okay, uh, Counsel Grammer.
Joy, I love that idea and, uh, I'm working with Kim on some stuff for that weekend. And if you're okay with it, I'm gonna volunteer you for that specific job and I have the specific good idea for a spot for it, but we could talk about that in the coming months.
Okay.
Well, and don't forget about, uh, Counselor Busk because it was his, you know, he might get voluntold with Joy because it was his email that says, "Community needs a hug." So I'm playing off of his.
I have another job for him during this. Just, just. Council needs to be aware too that like cooking hamburgers for a bunch of the community is going to require a lot of manpower. Like, it's not a two-person job. So, um, I will say last time when we did it, there was probably, I don't know, maybe four hundred people that showed up, uh, and me and Darren were a puddle of sweat when we were done. So, uh, you might want to find a friend and get some spouses encouraged right now that we've got a, we've got a job for them coming up.
Well, and I mean, realist, if we, if we do and, and you know, and we are able, um, and thank you, Sean, for that. If we are able to work with that Chamber of Commerce and we can sort of nail down a date, that might be a date that we, um, all could set aside that day even for a couple hours or send someone in our place if we can't be there. Um, but yeah, I mean, it would be nice to see, um, the seven of us work together and show some support and, you know, some finalization, right? We're, we're in an election year and, and we're heading into a new, um, form of government that's gonna look at this table different. So I think it would be nice to, um, to thank people, um, on behalf of us and, and on behalf of all the extra work that people have taken on. So I like that idea.
Okay. Um, okay, so it sounds like council's working on a few things behind the scenes, but we don't need a ton of work from administration at the moment. But we're definitely going to lean on them as we get some details figured out and we'll go from there. Nothing at the moment, I think. I, I think the initiative is there and the will is there and, uh, uh, you know, typically motions are driven to get administration to give direction on what we want them to do, but it sounds like we're doing a bunch of the heavy lifting behind the scenes, so let's do that. Um, okay, uh, for now, let's make a motion to accept that as information, actually, though. Uh, Counselor King was nodding. Um, any discussion? Call the question those in favor. That's carried. Um, let's jump into committee minutes. So first off, intermunicipal committee has not met. It got canceled and supposed to be rescheduled. I don't think we have a date though yet. Can we lean on them? I understand tri council got canceled too because they had an issue. So if we can send some things out and say, hey, we still want to meet and get a few things figured out, we should probably do that. Okay, because now I feel like it's gonna be a September thing. Counsel McGregor.
On that note, um, as we're coming up to the end of June, and so maybe, uh, a motion for administration to bring back something, if we're gonna be canceling the meeting in July, um, or August, we should probably look at that right away or at least at beginning July or even at this next June meeting, um, because that'll be our third meeting of the month. Maybe we should have a look if we are gonna be canceling that last Tuesday and first August, just because if we have some things open up and we're gonna work with the chamber and that, we maybe, you know, want to have some things dialed up before we have a little break and then head back into it.
Agreed. So let's put that on for discussion for next week. Typically, what we've done is canceled the, the third one in July and the first one in August. So it's kind of like a month-long break. Um, but we always encourage administration to look at what's on the horizon there that, that it all makes sense. Um, uh, watershed.
Um, so AEP has recently informed us, that's the Alberta Environment and Parks, has recently informed us that they will now be doing field sampling. Um, after telling us for years that they haven't, they're not going to do it. They're gonna do field sampling on the Lusus Lake Lake this summer. Um, so we're not going to duplicate those efforts. So our, our town staff don't have to do that anymore.
Um, so they're doing it in the river as well then?
Yep, so they'll be sampling in June, July, August, September. They'll be doing fifteen-point composite samples from each basin. Um, the parameters include everything that we planned with the addition of zebra muscle sampling, metals in August and inorganic compounds of concern. So usually it takes the staff there at AEP about two to five years to get this information back to us. Um, which we're, we, we need it right away. So Megan has been assured that the information will, um, come to us in a timely manner. Um, also, we're having our AGM on June seventeenth at two PM. We have some board positions up for election. So I encourage anyone who's interested, um, in protecting the water and protecting the beach and to continue to have a great place for us to go, to step up for one of these positions. Um, we have a member at large and an alternate, an oil and gas sector and an alternate, angling and rec and alternate, and NGO and alternate. So we have quite a few positions up. Um, the lake seems to be a hot item. The beach is a hot item. So I encourage people that are interested in it to step up and get involved.
Okay, questions? Um, just a comment. The, the, um, Alberta Environment and Parks has been doing a bunch of work there over the last, they started before COVID in regards to, um, um, you know, the, the creek study, migration study and some of the flooding issues and stuff behind there. You know, we continue to lose more and more of the bank, especially in behind the hospital there, uh, and it's quite significant. Um, and so the, the findings of that, that, you know, it gives direction on, on what they're gonna do in regards to some potential bank stabilization and so on and so forth. So can we bug them to kind of get an update on when that's coming and, you know, maybe send some pictures of, you know, Jordan's got time to go take a few pictures back there and show them how much has eroded. Like, it's crazy. Um, that we should say, like, we're, we're a bit concerned about this and this needs to be on the radar.
To your worship, yes, we'll bring to their attention with regard to this bank erosion. Yeah, sorry, erosion. And, uh, we'll work with the specialists in Alberta Environment to see what, what options are there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Chamber Commerce, sorry, go ahead.
Um, I've actually had a conversation with Megan about the banks and she's going to come down and we're going to take a look at them personally. And then she was going to reach out, but I guess it's good if our administration reaches out as well.
Okay. Well, just our administration was working with them before there that, that we're waiting for some of those pieces, right? Because it was gonna help facilitate some of our own drainage study, things that were going on there. So, um, we had, Associate Engineering was gonna do an updated, uh, flood mitigation study and overland drainage and so on and so forth. Um, so that was in about the second year of our term and then it just kind of got put on hold because they were, province was doing some work back there. We were waiting for that study, then it got put on hold because there was COVID. And so we should kind of check in and say like, hey, it's time, guys, what's going on? Um, Chamber Commerce, I missed the last meeting, but, um, Counsel Brundle, can you give us an update on what's going on there?
Yeah, um, the presentation was by Ken, I think I'm on.
Are you? Okay.
Presentation was by, uh, Ken Vanderwell and Expander Energy. Uh, it was, it was a pretty good, uh, uh, presentation. Uh, their shovel-ready project is thirty-seven million dollar project that they're putting into the area, uh, right beside Vanderwell's, starting July twenty twenty-one. And, um, the target startup is the fourth quarter in twenty twenty-two. But the major project will be done in twenty-four. Um, and the, the question of the day that several people wanted to know, um, was how many jobs it was gonna bring to our area. And I think just twelve to fifteen at, at this point, but there was gonna be a whole bunch of other offshoot jobs, truck drivers and, um, things that are going to be, um, you know, in the area and stuff. So that was really good to see. Uh, it was, uh, pretty excited about that one. So. And then the other thing, uh, the chamber is doing is they're putting out their, uh, membership right away. So everybody should be receiving their invoices too.
Okay. Um, so I, I know that before that Expander was waiting for some approvals and stuff to come to the province, so that, that must come if they're like basically breaking ground in July.
Yep, shovel-ready, July twenty-one.
That is fantastic, fantastic. And you know, you should never unders- undersell twelve to fifteen people. It's twelve to fifteen new families coming to Slade Lake.
That's right.
So, um, love to see economy growing. Um, so, so when, when is the block party weekend supposed to be?
Till August twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. There's a tentative plan in place here.
Okay. Tentative. And it was okay. Um, okay. Um, sorry, well, housing.
Uh, so yeah, a couple things. Um, so there was a house in the southeast, uh, that burned last fall. Uh, the damage was so extensive that it will be demolished and the, the house will not be rebuilt by housing or the government. And the lot will be sold. So we'll, I'm sure the town will see stuff going on, on that for the permit. Uh, announcement today too, that the, um, I, I mentioned last meeting that, uh, Suzie was, uh, retiring and they have, uh, done interviews. They did three interviews. And Gwen Zwick, uh, who is currently the financing director right now, uh, is going to be the new lodge manager. Um, she had filled in quite a bit when Suzie was gone, so, uh, I think she's gonna be a, a great choice and she's going to do well. So congrats to her. And then, uh, kind of big news, the building project. We, um, so Lindsay and I and Tyler met with the Minister Pahn yesterday. Finally got some details on this proposal. Uh, so the private sector, uh, P three is going ahead. It looks like, um, it's going to be twenty units of various sizes, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. We have to hash that out, uh, that are gonna be RGI, so rent geared to income. And then twenty units that are going to be, uh, market, uh, and what the government calls market is actually ten percent below what we actually call, uh, uh, the real estate market. Um, so not really thrilled about the ten, the twenty, uh, units going on the, the market because our board was always adamant that we weren't going to step on markets' toes. Um, and bringing twenty units into the community, I'm not sure that's a great idea, could flood the market. Um, so we're, we're going to be hopefully, hopefully hashing that stuff out. Uh, and there's a lot of questions that we, um, didn't have, they didn't have answers for. And, um, so we're gonna have another meeting to, to nail down details. Because, um, you know, we need to know the roles of the partners because there's various partners. Uh, we need to know housing's role. We need to know what size units they are gonna be and how many. Um, yeah, some of the things that don't really meet the housing, uh, waiting list twos need to be addressed. Um, so yeah, we're looking for another meeting, hopefully this week. But we haven't heard yet on, on nailing down details. So more to come on that.
Questions, comments, Counsel McGregor?
So I have, would this be something then, um, in the next year and a half, if, uh, we change governments from this government to another government? Could this be something that could be squished, just like the education plan and all the health and everything else that gets swished from government to government? Could this happen? Like, you guys could get all this work done, but you might not break ground yet because it takes, you know, a while to work with government and that. Could this be something that would get pulled back off the table from you guys if a new government comes in?
Very well could happen because the pace of government isn't really fast, right? So who knows? Yeah, we have no idea. Because I mean, it took us four years. Yeah, that's right. It took us four years to get this far.
Like this initial project came from the previous government. We're, so it already got kiboshed and now it's reback again.
Yeah, so very good question.
That being said, though, that was some of the concern in the conversation that we had yesterday around the fact that, um, uh, let's be frank, they had one proposal that came out. That one proposal, um, it's our understanding that this group doesn't have experience in doing this type of project. Um, and so we're, and, and because it's, would be the first private partnership of its kind in Slade Lake and for the housing authorities history, um, where does, where does that fit with the housing authority? From the community standpoint, this is all about social housing on a long-term, uh, impact. So who actually monitors to make sure that things that, you know, the grant was intended for actually get accomplished and get accomplished over twenty years. Um, and so, uh,
What happens if any of the partners change along the way? Like, there's lots of questions to be nailed down, yeah.
Totally. And so the, the, the emphasis that we put on the minister, um, yesterday and, and their staff was that we're excited that there's a potential for this project in this realm. However, we want to get the details sorted out sooner rather than later so that if it doesn't make sense and those details don't come to fruition, that we move towards a different model that we actually get this accomplished. We don't want to blow twelve, eighteen months talking about this and then going, ah, actually that doesn't really work. So, um, you know, that was the emphasis that was, uh, left yesterday. And, um, administration definitely heard that loud and clear. And we'll, uh, see where it ends up. Um, any further questions? Uh, tourism.
Oh, that's me again. Um.
Oh, sorry, Tri Council Health. My mistake, my mistake, I own it.
Um, okay, so try, for Tri Council meeting. So we had, um, Kim Burton join us, um, for this meeting. And she's the lead for the public health nurses. So she gave us, um, just kind of a lowdown of what happens at the fire hall and what you can expect, um, when you go to get a vaccine or a COVID test, um, at the fire hall. So it was really nice to have her come and explain all of that. Um, you can book, um, on eight-one-one or online. It's actually, um, working well and moving fast. She had someone report to her that there was twenty thousand people in the queue. And within a half an hour, they were booked and ready to go for the. there was twenty thousand people in the queue and within a half an hour, they were booked and ready to go for their vaccine. Um, so it's going a lot faster and it's working out good. Um, they're very happy with the, the fire hall um, arrangement, it, it's working good. They have a cleaning person. They have some casual people that work there, they have a swabbing team, um, and yeah, so they, it, it's working well, so that was nice to hear. Um, we've had eleven babies born, so our T and A, so that's our times, is thirteen days to see a doctor and tend to see a nurse practitioner. Um, this will also change as summer is coming up and there is vacations booked and time booked off already, so you will see an increase in waiting for a doctor's appointment and a nurse practitioner's appointment, which happens every single year, it's not new, but um, it is an uh, update to be patient as um, doctors and nurses will be taking some time off, which means you won't be getting an appointment that quick. Uh, we have walk-ins, um, but the doctors have been full, so with the walk-ins, if someone is um, called in sick, uh, like a physician is called in sick or is on another call schedule for other facilities in our region, because we still seem to be um, helping out with that, much against my dismay, um, we're still helping in other places. Um, so those other communities need to uh, work on finding that, so it'd be nice to be able to work with them and help them get their complement of staff um, back up, um, because that will leave us some days that we will not be able to have walk-ins. Um, the call bell update is just about completed at the hospital, as well as the fire alarm is set um, for that system to be done. And the other one that needs a little attention, um, is at the screening desk. We've had, uh, they will continue with the screening desk um, at A H S, so you will be asked um, your list of questions, you will be given a new mask and you will be asked to hand sanitize. That will continue even as some of these covid restrictions ease up in other places. That will continue um, at our facility in both the going into the F C C as well as going into the E R. And we've had some loud swearing disrespectful people to our screening people, so I'd ask Johan if he would like me to talk about that and he said yes. So a reminder to our community, these people are there to do their job. They have been asked to ask you these questions, give you a new mask, ask you to sanitize your hands and then move forward. So there's no need to be loud and swearing and disrespectful to these people, just like there's no need to be loud and disrespecting to the hostess at the restaurant or the um, girl working or this man working at the um, extra foods that asks you a question. Um, so please, uh, we will not put up with this behavior and I'd ask Johan if there is necessary um, for me to come and sit with one of these screeners um, for a few hours one day to get this under control. And if it continues, then yes, he will take me up and I will sit with the screeners and we will get some community rain back in. Um, as a lot of these people are younger and some of them, this is kind of their first jobs also as well in public where you're meeting that defensive rude behavior. So we need to remember that because as we go in, then the physician needs to remind their patient, which takes two or three minutes, and by the time you're done your paperwork and you only have a fifteen-minute appointment, um, to reprimand an adult is taking time for the next person's appointment behind, which is, leaves a backup. So if we can just remember that um, as we're entering this new world, A H S will still be having their screening desks and to please treat these people with some respect and some kindness and that will go a long way in our community um, with our healthcare um, providers. So that's it for me.
Okay, questions, comments? Um, Councillor McGregor, I'll just throw in there, I know that one of the conversations there that we had with um, you and I were there kind of advocating, helping the physicians through some of the stuff with the Minister of Health. I know that process is ongoing, but one of them was the discussion around the recruitment and it seemed like we had the uh, approval there to recruit another physician there, uh, and uh, G P. And so I'm just curious if there's any movement on that or anything happening.
I actually think that that recruitment went out, like that, that job posting has gone out.
Okay.
Yeah, um, but I will double check on that, but yeah, it was supposed to have been ready and to, to go out, but I will double check on that this week.
Okay. Um, okay, sorry, tourism?
Uh, yeah, so uh, we are going to be doing the familiarization tours. Um, we had planned on doing that in first part of May and then the lockdown happened, so that got uh, postponed again. So yeah, we're going to start to do that and we meet Thursday, so we're going to hash out some dates and figure that out. Um, I also met with David and Leah today on some direction for the board. Uh, just want to see, you know, what tourism for the rest of the year looks like with covid. Um, uh, Leah had some fantastic ideas, so did David, uh, so uh, we're going to be uh, bring it up to the board, of course, because they haven't heard any of this yet, uh, see where that goes. But if all goes well, we're going to be recruiting some fresh blood and new faces uh, to do some of these things, so stay tuned for that.
Excellent. Any questions, comments? As I see none, uh, library.
So good news for the library, we're going to be able to be open um, to the public again and um, hopefully this will be our uh, final adjustment to um, closing down. Uh, instead of opening on the tenth, we'll open up Monday on the fourteenth with some hours just reduced for the summer. Um, to be quite frank, because we don't really trust the government that we might not get shut down, so um, hiring all these people to lay them off again is something that we have not wanted to do as a library board and not wanted to leave up to our managers, so it'll be open from ten to four um, for the summer until um, our first board meeting in September, which we will reevaluate then and hopefully will be open back up to our regular hours. Uh, we awarded our two scholarships, so we took over the legacy scholarships from that board when the book was sold um, after the fire, so we've taken that out. So we had two recipients, so we'll be awarding them um, their scholarships on the next Wednesday, I think, so watch for that, it'll be in the paper and then we'll send it to the schools, so that's always an exciting thing to do. Um, and we're also uh, working on something, I'm just waiting for a couple more emails to come through and you might see a new piece of equipment around town traveling that's got the library on it, so we're pretty excited. Hopefully by next week, I'll be able to tell you and then that should be good for kids and teens and seniors um, all over the community and in the park, so we're excited for that. Um, and
Joy is like, is an actual piece of equipment or is it like you on your bike there with?
No, it's an actual piece of equipment, not Joy. Joy has her own mic with baskets, but this is just for the library. Um, and so we're going to do some, uh, Suzie's going to do some different things for some special events, um, also hoping to do um, in July and maybe out of the library um, in the community or at the library. And then um, also the library is always willing to partner, so um, the town was making up some of those craft bags as well, and so if there is a chance to um, partner, I know we don't have someone in that position right now, but when we do, to always remember the library board is also um, you know, paid by taxpayers and, and that, so if we could partner with them, um, because we could maybe do some different craft bags for a different age group if we work together or make some more, not elaborate, but just bigger craft bags or different things. So if we can work together and use both of those funding that the library has and also funding that the program coordinator has, um, that would be wonderful. So they're willing to work with us um, anytime and they're excited for covid to kind of lift and be able to work back with the town on some of their programming, so hopefully next month, um, I'll be able to tell you some more exciting news for the library. Thanks.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Um, naming advisory? Uh, Community Futures?
Um, so the R R R F application deadline, which is the Rural Recovery Relief Fund, um, it's for businesses who can't get access to the forty thousand dollars through their banks. If you have not applied for this, I can't stress enough, it's forty, forty to sixty thousand dollars that you can get for sole proprietor businesses, um, you can get your application through Community Futures uh, and you have until June thirty-first, so I really highly suggest you put your application in as our office has been given additional monies to hand out. Um, if you have applied for your, if you have received your forty thousand, you can go back and reapply for an additional twenty thousand. Um, the covid nineteen business impact analysis that was done throughout the Slave Lake region and White Court region by the Ballard Group is now completed. The study and the results are available to the public simply by contacting Community Futures. Um, Love Local Shop Local Initiative will be launching here soon, so stay tuned for that. And we're also partnering, partnering with organizations to start a customer service training program, which is also forthcoming.
Councillor McGregor?
Okay, and yahoo, we're going to have Lemonade Day, so up until like literally the end of May, Lemonade Day was considered a festival and so we were still canceled. So some of our um, ladies that run this in the region that hold the license for all of us worked really hard with A H S and um, were able to have Lemonade Day. So Lemonade Day will be June nineteenth, um, Saturday, June nineteenth in Slave Lake from ten till one. Um, I have another training tomorrow and then I will have all the um, participants trained up and ready to go. And then a, a map will come out and you will see, I think I have thirteen families um, registered for it, so you will see Lemonade Day stands um, all over Slave Lake, some in front of businesses, um, some maybe at the baseball diamond, because baseball is even on that weekend. Um, so come out and show your support to the little entrepreneurs that are learning how to make money, save money and also give money. So those are the three things um, that's important in Lemonade Day, so watch for it.
Okay, I'm excited for that one. Last year, or no, I guess it wasn't last year, the year before though, some of the elaborate business stands that were set up, it was crazy. Uh, and as someone that loves business, uh, it was great to see kids doing that because there's so much you can learn from that experience. Fantastic. Um, like, because the last time too, you guys put out a map and you put out where they all were and, okay, okay. Okay, um, C E C.
Okay, holy smokes, a lot of talking. So um, school year is coming to an end. Uh, our fiscal year is also coming to an end for our, for the college and C E C. Um, this has been a challenging year for students, so a big thank you to um, the Students Association and Trina and a big thank you to Wanda McGrath um, for just checking on the students all year, making sure their mental health has been good. Helping them, delivering things, just being a good listening ear. It's been a tough year um, doing online work and having the internet not be as sturdy and stable. Um, so we're actually really looking forward to in-person learning that is supposed to start again in September, so we're holding out for that and we've also approved, so um, you'll see some awards um, coming forward from the C E C uh, for different avenues in marks and just for awards for like a high five award for just doing a good job this year and they get nominated, so. Yeah, we're really excited to see that. We have no more meetings this summer and our next meeting will be in September and then someone else will take over C E C in October, so yeah, it's been good working with them.
Okay, questions, comments? Uh, Homeless Coalition?
Uh, so we met May twenty-seventh, it was a small group in attendance, we're trying to figure out our next steps. Uh, the next meeting is on June eighteenth and we'll focus on who is the Homeless Coalition, uh, what agencies comprise it? Uh, what is the purpose of it? How do we fulfill the purpose? Who are our clients? Who are our partners? Uh, so where do we service? Slave Lake and how big of an area? Um, why? So who benefits from our work and values? What is important to us? So we're kind of starting from square one, uh, one thing is clear, we need help. If we don't receive help from other organizations and other community members, we are at serious risk of the coalition disbanding, so. Uh, the next meeting is Friday, June eighteenth from one to four-thirty in the council chambers. Uh, we invite any interested individuals or organizations to attend and agenda packages can be obtained by contacting the town.
Okay, you're doing the in-person meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I would just make a point there, Bryce, in the past to, you know, the only way that, that has any momentum is you have to get all the agencies involved, right? Um, and so I would make a point to encourage you to phone some of them and say, hey, listen, we're here to reinvent, reinvent the wheel, we're here to put in the time. Um, we want to make a difference and move something forward and the only way we're going to do that is if you guys show up and be part of that solution moving forward and so. Um, otherwise you end up in a room with four or five people and nothing changes, so uh, you're going to have to pound some pavement, I think. Um, M P C?
Uh, so we uh, had a few meetings, we approved a security suite in the industrial area. Uh, approved an accessory building in Gloria, Gloryland, approved a temporary patio, patio expansion as well.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? I see none. Uh, S D A B um, had a meeting, um, and so um, there was actually two applications that came forward, one was for a commercial building that needs some variance. Uh, variances there because of um, some setbacks, uh, it's basically the old Phoenix Steakhouse and um, uh, realistically, there's nothing that, that they're going to be able to change to hit, that it's been like that for a million years, that one was pretty straightforward. Uh, the other was for a uh, duplex unit um, over in the um, north, or sorry, southeast that council had made some zoning changes to. Um, and so there was a bunch of variances that were on there and so it was a, actually a very lively debate amongst the members. Um, and so what the, what the applicant asked for was actually refused. Um, uh, parcel coverage was a bit of an issue, uh, some of the backyard setbacks were a bit of an issue. Um, however, rather than just refusing it outright, um, they did give them some variance requests and changed the numbers to something that the group felt more significantly fit with what made sense. And so basically it helped the developer from having to come back and start all over again. Um, and so it was a, it was a good discussion. Um, questions, comments on that? Councillor King?
Um, so on that development, the road was ripped up actually and there's a big dip in the road. Uh, I don't know if the developer or our town staff can just put up a bump ahead sign or something, because it's going to be so damaged, people are flying over it and just taking off. Because it's, yeah, even though it's a thirty zone.
I was gonna say, there's a park zone in there, so they shouldn't be flying over it, but.
But it's, the teenagers come from school and they zip around that way and nobody's really paying attention. I don't know.
So you'll worship, we'll take a look.
It's amazing to watch, but.
Yeah, and then typically what happens is that's incorporated into the patch paving program, that's part of the hundred thousand that we bid out at the end of the season. Um, and those things get repaired. Um, that's part of the reason they actually wait till the end of the season is so that they incorporate all those and it's not left all winter. Um, waste?
Meeting on Friday.
Uh, airport?
Uh, we haven't met, however, an update, um, our perimeter fencing is nearly complete, there's just seems to be some work that I think needs to be done on the gates and then I think it's fully, fully done.
Were you guys able to sell your old stuff?
Um, yes, so yeah, about that, so um, if anybody's interested in some of the fencing, uh, reach out to Pierre at the airport and then they're going to um, look at some um, pricing options to sell it likely. There's a post on Facebook.
Yeah, they're advertising it. Um, any other questions, comments? Councillor McGregor?
Bryce, can you explain to the public, because I got about a hundred questions of it and I have zero clue? Um, how far are you going to be able to go up to on that road? And then what about the people that have like personal hangers? Or what if I need to get like Robert's keys out of the remote parking lot and he's in Wabaska, how am I going to do that?
Okay, so um, the gate is just right past the hangar. And it's my understanding during daytime, the gate will be open, it's when the uh, it's when the terminal building's not open that it'll be closed. And then um, people who have, who are permitted access to the airport will have fobs or, or a code on their phone that they send and it should open for them.
Okay, Legacy, we've got a meeting coming up but haven't met yet, Protective Services. Emergency Management Advisory, we did that one already.
Um, are we going to meet again um, as this current council with this emergency management advisory? Or are we not meeting and then it'll be the new council that'll meet in like November? Or are we not meeting and then it'll be the new council that'll meet in like November?
Likely I would see the second option. So um, we just did that one here not too long ago, which was our first one in a while. We should probably change the thing that says meets four times yearly, because we don't meet four times yearly. Um, and um, yeah, it would be the next council there that would discuss and see what they want to do with that.
Thank you.
Um, Norden Albert Murders and Reeds Caucus has been put off until the fall and Norden Alberta Elected Leaders meets uh, virtually, I want to say the, the end of this week. Um, motion to accept the verbal committee updates. Counselor Bus, thank you. Any discussion? Call the question those in favor. Let's carry management task lists.
Thank you, worship. I have a, a four short uh, update. Uh, first, with regard to the request for proposal for engineering and, and legal services. And then we've done the legal source, not engineering. And we've received seven proposals, including a local engineering firm. So we are currently reviewing, you know, their, their qualifications. So that's what we are doing and it's encouraging that there are seven proposals there already, including a, a, a local firm. The second update is in regard to High Prairie entrance, school entrance, where it's, there was a little concern with the school buses, uh, colliding, you know, potential collision with vehicles and
This is on Caribou Trail?
Uh, no, not that one. The, the other side of the school. So Caribou Trail, they abandoned that act plan. So they are, they are working with us to look at some safety features for their uh, entrance to the parking lot. And see if you can protect, better protect the pedestrians and the kids while there are uh, birth, school bus exits. And then there are a lot of parents who are picking up and dropping off the kids, things like that. So there's a variety of uh, traffic um, safety devices that we are looking at. Um, and then uh, we are, we are setting up a meeting with the school district to discuss about those features.
Okay.
And the, the third one is with regard to the council orientation and, and this is with regard to the future council. So we are currently uh, putting the packages together. We are, we actually, in the administration, we are setting up a meeting to discuss about it. And once it's done, then we will report to the council. The last update is with regard to the code, council code of conduct. So currently the HR department is leading uh, this and there is, we are, we are, you know, diligently crafting the uh, the proposal for the new council code of conduct. And once it's done, it'll be circulated to the council for review. So that concludes my presentation here.
Okay, questions, comments from council? If not, motion to accept the management task list's information. Thank you, Counselor Brownmac. Any discussion? Call the question those in favor. That is carried. Uh, Mayor's Corner, so um, just want to say that uh, I was very impressed with the community turnout last week. Um, uh, for the walk that was organized by a bunch of community members in regards to the uh, impacts of finding two hundred and fifteen children in camels in the residential schools. Uh, I was quite overwhelmed actually at uh, how many people did show up. Um, it was great to see, it was great to see that they were able to uh, memorialize and acknowledge a lot of those items left out here and um, some of the issues that we run into as a community when we leave stuff out, we didn't experience. And it was just great to see that the community was a part of that. So um, we were watching some of the stuff on social media that seems to continue and uh, I just, I just want to say thanks to the community for for playing part in that. Um, but uh, recognize that, that's step one of many, I think. Um, had a meeting with Minister Pahn, which I think is a good start, but I am hesitant on uh, to start clapping and go hooray, hooray there for sure. Um, we definitely want to see that project get going. Um, because if it can't get going through two separate governments, I don't know why a third government would say, let's keep doing this. Um, so we'll keep pushing for that one. Uh, I got a meeting coming up that the RCMP has reached out and wants to talk about a new building. So we'll be anxious to see what that looks like and what that means. Uh, behind the scenes, uh, I've been doing some, you councils aware, because it's CCed all you guys in it, but um, uh, reaching out to uh, many of our neighbors and First Nation and Maytee community about two things. One, looking for some support and advocacy on Highway eighty-eight. Still blows my mind um, that there's really no investment going in this. We're not really moving the needle on this one at all. Uh, and it continues to fall on deaf ears, but it was also uh, I think an opportunity to reach out to our neighbors and say, you know, especially when it comes to these things with this acknowledgement and, and this education around uh, residential schools and the fact that, you know, we need to, I truly believe we need to do some things better and do things differently. Um, you know, I, I, I don't think it's our thing to champion. I think it's our thing to support uh, the champions that are already exist. And so I did reach out to a number of them for some direction on how we could do a good job and, and understand where our role is as a municipality. So um, we'll see where, um, that goes to send out the end of last week and hope to see some responses coming in soon. Uh, more than anything, I will say as an individual, as a father, as a mayor, as a businessperson, um, I'm excited for, for Thursday. Um, and you know, I think we need to acknowledge the fact that basically Alberta is saying this is, we're opening up. Um, and businesses are growing or, you know, businesses are, are all getting open and these restrictions are coming off and you know, some people have lived and died by those restrictions. Others have adapted to whatever made sense in their life. Um, but it's caused a lot of frustration for a lot of different people about this person should be doing that or that person, why do I feel guilty about what I'm doing? Um, and then the fact that we can get back to a little bit of a normal level playing field um, that we can be safe, that we can hug each other, that we can go out in public, that we can sit together at a restaurant uh, and have a meal and have a drink and, and then get back to a normalcy of life. Um, and I truly believe in like, there's a lot of doubt, you know, and, and I'm actually shocked how much doubt when I'm talking to people there is about the fact they think the government's gonna shut us down again. And I don't know if I'm just naive or optimistic or um, just my businesses have been impacted that much that I just can't see a, a stage five here going on again or shutdown number five. That, I truly believe that, I don't think we're getting shut down again. I think this is the, the actual progression we see around the world in other countries. Uh, it's happening. And so um, I think it's exciting, exciting, exciting times. Um, and should not be uh, not should, should not be so easily dismissed. So I'm excited for Thursday and I hope everybody else is too. Um, because I have faith that this is the beginning of the new world. Um, with that, I have nothing else. Oh, sorry, there's correspondence from Peace Library System. And so there's your financial statements that they sent over. Um, Council McGregor, I know you're on the Peace Library System. This is basically an information piece. Anything to add? She says no. Motion to accept the uh, Peace Library uh, system letter and financial updates as information. Thank you, Counselor Busk. Any discussion? Call the question those in favor. That is carried. Counselor Busk, motion to adjourn. Any discussion? Call the question those in favor. That is carried. Thanks, guys. It was a good meeting.